L'Oreal Kelly. Lisa Thomas. Kenneth and Gail Luther. Brenda Gaye. Carrie and Brown. Suzanne Daniel. Sherry Lawrence submitted multiple comments on the portal and via email. Matthew and Latonya Williams, Kathy Perkins. And then the commission's also been supplied petitions in opposition. The commission has copies of all of this that was emailed to you from Burt earlier today. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'm ready to hand it back over to you.
Carter, can I ask a question real quick, just for point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
We have the list of the people that are in the group with us, except for the applicant. Are they all in opposition to the application?
The applicant was able to connect Stephanie.
Maybe I should ask, who is actually in favor of the application?
Stephanie Groves is in the meeting to present the application. Ms. Gregory, council representative for this district, is in the meeting. And then the four people in opposition. So we have six total that are in the meeting, one who's presenting.
And Ms. Papas, we need to remind people that if they have it on YouTube, they need to mute YouTube.
Yes.
Thank you. Again, this item's up for 5377 Moffett Road, a high subdivision with the owners. Is there anything that, has the owner seen the staff recommendations?
Yes, the owner has seen the staff recommendations.
Do we have any additional comments or concerns or questions that you would like to bring before the commission?
Um, yes, the owner has a few comments that they would like, like me to make on their behalf. This is Stephanie Groves of GSE.
Okay, you have the floor.
Okay. The owner obviously wants to move forward with his development, if possible, and get the rezoning. Moffett Road has been, you know, looked at as our plan for in the future land use plan as a commercial corridor that will eventually bring new businesses and commerce to the area that will create a need for the additional housing. The owner feels that multifamily housing should be an option, not just single-family residential. And that seems to be the predominant housing in the area. Recently, USA Health, which is 2.2 miles away, received approximately $90 million to expand their facility, which would bring in more people to this area, jobs to the area that could possibly be looking for housing in the area. So we believe there's a need for additional housing for planned and future developments in this area. We wanted to make sure that the commission understood at the last meeting, we were asked to meet with the neighbors. We did a neighbor, neighborhood outreach meeting back on January 12th. And we met with the neighbors and they listed their concerns and, and there were quite a few. Some of the major ones were an access to McIntyre, McIntyre, nobody wanted that. And we have since in our recent, we have put in that there will be no access to McIntyre. So that we feel like we've addressed that concern. Also, they were concerned about privacy and fencing. We have proposed a 10-foot-high fence on them, all around the property to help alleviate that. We noticed within the comments that the residents recently put in that we reviewed this morning was that there were a lot of, a lot of, the people referred to the possibility of future units. This development will only be 32 units. There is no room for additional units or expansion in the future. So we just wanted to make that clear. And also, we, we just feel that there, there's going to be a need for this additional type housing in the area. And that's, that's what we'd like to say. Also, I would like to make note that if, we would, we would prefer withdrawing the application over the planning commission giving us a denial today. So if that could just be considered.
Withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for commissioners before we allow others in support to speak?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. For the, for Ms. Groves, you said there's only 32 units in this development. Does that mean that there's, I guess there's eight structures with four individual residential homes in each of the structures?
That is correct.
Could you give us more detail about each of these dwellings? Are they two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom? What are they?
They're all two-bedroom. I'm sorry, two-bedroom, two-bath. And they're approximately right under 1,100 square feet.
Okay. All right, and then you, the access through McIntyre has been, has been closed off?
Yes, so there will be no access, access to McIntyre Drive.
Okay, so you'll have the one, one access onto Moffett Road, that's the only access to the property?
Correct.
Okay, and you said a 10-foot privacy fence around the perimeter of the property? I guess with the exception of the Moffett roadside?
Correct, obviously, for sideline distances, we wouldn't be able to put that, that fence on Moffett. But that's, you know, that's not abutting any, any properties that have concerns.
And no plans for future development?
No plans for future development.
Can we get fire departments comment? Do we have somebody in the fire department to address any concerns that they might have?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, what about traffic? Is Maybeth with us today?
No, sir, she isn't.
Okay, that's, that's all my questions.
I have a question, Papas. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna go ahead.
Okay, okay, so the staff recommendation, as it stands right now, I'm, I'm a little confused reading the, the staff report because I've got multiple recommendations. So the subdivision is recommended for approval, right?
That is correct, because it complies with the minimum standards of the subdivision regulations.
But the PUD and the rezoning are recommended for denial?
That is correct.
Okay.
With a subdivision, if it meets, you know, minimum standards, it can proceed forward as one lot. It's not, you have to remember, the subdivision regulations are a totally separate document. So it can move forward with a one-lot subdivision. It would, without the rezoning, simply remain a single-family residential lot?
Yeah, yeah, I got you, you know.
Margaret, this is Doug. Do we know why they applied for B2 as opposed to R3?
No, sir, but the applicant's still here and should be able to answer that.
Okay.
Because it was, um, we, we did that because it was less than four acres. We were concerned about some of the PUD rules and regulations about property with four acres and multifamily PUD.
But Margaret, as I read the staff report, R3 would be suitable if the planning commission wanted to consider that?
Yes, yes. And the minimum of four acres is the recommended size for the creation of a new B2 district.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's why some of this is just, is a little confusing, reading, reading some of this. It does seem pretty out of line.
Ms. Groves, if we were to consider changing the recommendation to an R3 instead of a B1, would y'all accept that if we were to talk about that possibility?
Yes, the owner would be willing to accept that.
If we were to do that, I mean, staff recommended that the zoning change was not justified. If we went to R3, would staff's opinion of that change?
Um, you know, it is adjacent to an existing B2 site, but it does abut R1 to the south and to the west. If the commission looks to rezone, recommend the rezoning and approve the PUD, I believe we can send you some potential recommended conditions once you've heard from, you know, from the members of the public and the council representative for this district.
Any other questions for commissioners? Is there anyone else here to speak for this application? Is there someone here to speak against it?
Yes, sir, I think the first person would be Councilmember Gina Gregory.
Ms. Gregory, you have the floor.
Margaret and Planning Commission members, I was not planning to speak one way or the other. Mainly today, I wanted to listen and see how this went because it will eventually, more than likely at any rate, fall into my court on the city council. So I really wanted to see how this all played out today. I do know that the neighbors over there are very much in opposition to this. They have a lot of questions and concerns that I'm sure you will hear today. So I just ask for you to, you know, to listen to those before you make your recommendations.
Thank you.
First person signed up to speak is L'Oreal Kelly.
Ms. Kelly, you have the floor.
Yeah. Hold on, I have. Okay. Um, well, I, if, if, if my understanding...
Okay, Ms. Kelly, I've muted you. You need to completely stop the live stream. Okay, and if you'll hit star six, you can begin speaking.
Hello?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, between the phone and the computer, this is not going well. Okay, it is my understanding of the R3 would be required for acres for PUD. It reads that for an R3, abutting a, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, the R3 reads that it does require the four acres. There was in there that if it abuts a B2, you can forego the four acres. As, as you've stated, the, the B2 property that it currently abuts is only half an acre. It, it currently serves as a residential property. It hasn't been a business in many years. It was originally only rezoned to hold a barber shop. I would think that the surrounding residential properties that abut it, you know, somewhere in the vicinity of maybe six acres, should hold more weight than that little bitty B2 that's not really working as B2. You know, I don't know if we need to argue that the B1 zoning at this point. And even though this would, the proposed project does fall under the B1, you know, it is not a business that would serve or benefit the community. The applicants have had since November to provide an adequate qualifier for rezoning. Yeah, I don't know if there's a misinterpretation of meaning or what the issue is, but their statement that it's necessary and desirable, of course, is necessary and desirable to them. I'm not sure that that really meets a qualifying definition. We are obviously all very opposed to it. I have beyond, because there's not a whole lot to argue in the rezoning. I also went through the map for Mobile that I know a lot of the, the board and council have participated in. You know, under the planned element, it states that Mobile faces a number of challenges, such as limited mobility, sprawling conditions, and declining neighborhoods. We're already seeing that. You know, the, the neighborhood goals listed are more residential development located in proximity to jobs and services, especially downtown and major employers. If, if they're going to use USA expanding, we're going to end up with a bunch of college kids. You know, that's not going to benefit this area. I think there's enough student housing in the area of the university. You know, the neighborhood goals also state vibrant neighborhoods with strong and diverse sense of place, protected and enhanced neighborhood character. I'm not understanding how a 32-unit apartment complex fits with that vision. Again, from the map of Mobile, under mobility and connectivity goals, it's, it's a decreased traffic congestion, especially on major corridors. Moffett is a major corridor. We already have traffic issues. The traffic that's going to be generated from 32 apartments is, is only going to contribute to that. More walkable places with a variety of destinations, services, and necessities within close proximity. I think McIntyre and Carriage Woods are the only ones that even have sidewalks. We don't want them attached to McIntyre. It'd be nowhere for anybody to walk to. There's nothing within close proximity. Listed is transportation infrastructure that is aligned with community character. Not if they want to come through McIntyre. Then, you know, now you're talking about, if, if you're going to encourage public transportation, you have to increase the routes. And that just seems ridiculous. Under planned unit development, adjacent properties and uses. The design of the PUD shall consider and provide protection and adverse effects of adjacent land uses as well as protection of...
One minute.
Yep. Were you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am, you have a minute.
Okay. Adjacent land uses as well as protection of adjacent land uses and adverse effects of the PUD. We're not protected from anything. And that there's no consideration to the sound, surrounding, single-story, single-residence properties. We have no protections according to, to, to this plan. And... The track shall be so located with respect to major streets, collector's streets, and other transportation facilities as to have access to them without generating excessive traffic along minor streets and residential districts outside the PUD. There's no way that, that this is not going to have the opposite of I did. This, this is just ridiculous. If, if I could make one request, if, if allowable, when everybody else has spoken, if I would be allowed to make just a one-minute statement slash appeal to the owner with an alternative suggestion?
It's not, our rules say that, you know, you have to kind of present what you have to present now.
Okay, I, I will put in writing what I want to say, and I will send it to you afterwards. And I am asking if Stephanie would please get in contact with me. I believe she has my telephone number.
Thank you. Ms. Papas, who's next?
The next person signed up to speak is Isaac Gray. Mr. Ray. He's in the meeting on a phone. The next person signed up, will come back to him, is Suzanne Daniel.
Here.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniel, you have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I'm Suzanne Daniel. I live at 1670 Mississippi Street. My backyard property is adjacent to the west side of the said property. My first concern today is, as L'Oreal has already stated, the traffic. The apartment design shows 66 parking spaces on three acres of land, which only has one entrance and exit to Moffett Road. Moffett Road is already the main road for commuters from Sims, Wilmer, and George County. This entrance and exit area is not at an intersection. In addition, this would cause havoc for commuters turning left into our own neighborhoods. The one entrance and exit from Moffett Road is not well-designed to meet a smooth flow into Moffett Road, which is already backed up during peak hours. And a traffic light is, a traffic light is not the answer because streets west of the property making left turns would have excessive wait time for those making those left turns. Again, this is not an intersection, and even an intersection would not be able to handle the traffic congestion this would cause. For emergency personnel, this would be a nightmare and jeopardize the safety of those on that property as well as our neighborhood residents. Our concern is, our next concern is the air, clean air products. Mr. Babaly introduced as solar panels on top of the building. This three-acre property is adjacent to single-family dwellings on the west side with, and which have huge oak trees. In my backyard alone, there are four huge oak trees that will certainly block all direct sunlight to his solar panels. Another concern is privacy. A 10-foot fence is not going to help two-story buildings that are adjacent to each other with windows. With 32-story apartments and security cameras, as we saw in the video at Hampton Inn in January, those, those security cameras were going right down to our backyards. How will that ever be any privacy for us? There will be none. Next are the lights from those two-story buildings shining in our backyards. When privacy is invaded by 32 two-story apartments, yes, property value is compromised. Apartment tenants do not have a stake in our neighborhood. There are transients waiting to move. I asked today, this is our neighborhood and our forever homes. Homes that we waste our children, where we've retired, where our grandchildren come and our, our families come back to. Apartment dwellers are more likely to engage in crime and other antisocial behavior. We are an established, single-family community here. Renters have been proven in this area to be the greatest contributors to property decline. This apartment complex will not only cause traffic problem, invade neighborhood privacy, and lower property values, now will overload the surrounding Title I school systems. John Will, Scarborough, and Blunt are all Title I schools. We're not here today to stop change. We welcome growth, growth that is well-designed and appropriate to our neighborhood and to our forever homes. This housing project would be better suited in another area. We beseech you today, council, to please not approve this. Please encourage single-family dwellings that are consistent with our neighborhood's character. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Who's next to speak, Ms. Papas?
It appears Mr. Ray is giving some feedback. Mr. Ray, Isaac Ray, are you there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, he's next up.
And Mr. Ray, you have the floor to speak?
Yes, sir. My question is about the criminal element part of it. These are supposed to be luxury homes. And the location that it's in, where you going to get luxury people from? If they don't come, then the next place is the lower echelon, which brings the drugs, the crime, illicit, illegal, break-ins. I'm a retired cop, I've seen it happen, and I do not want it near me. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak against, Ms. Papas?
Yes, Tamika Hughes, and hold on, it looks like she got bumped off. But I'm letting her back in the meeting. Ms. Hughes, are you here?
Hello.
Yay. Ms. Hughes?
Yes, I lost internet connection on my computer. Hold on, I'm trying to log in with my phone. Give me just a second.
There, there's no need to log in with your phone, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Is it my turn to talk?
Yes, and if you could give your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Tamika Hughes, and I live at address 1597 McIntyre Drive, which is on the back of the property. I'm the second property away from the Hive, the designated, well, 5377 Moffett Road. And I wanted to say that I'm totally, me and my husband, we're totally against the rezoning of the property and the building of the Hive subdivision because we feel like it's not necessary nor desired by any other surrounding current residents. And we, our issues are, we have kids. We have three boys, ourselves, and six nephews that use McIntyre Drive as a play area, a safe place to play their outside activities, ride their bikes and everything. And my concern is that even though they say that they're not going to open up that property to, at McIntyre Drive, to that property, I feel like due to safety and future use, and the city may cause them to open that, we will be left with the, the, the back of that, because it's going to happen. They say it's not going to happen, but they haven't even had the fire department to even assess the safety of 32 units with people in 32 units with one opening. That's a disaster for safety, emergencies, and everything. So that leaves McIntyre Drive Street as the only other way in, which will be, eventually lead to it being open. And that's my major concern because the reason I purchased my property at 1597, me and my husband, because it was a dead-end street. And you had the safety of not having unnecessary traffic coming down the street. Or if someone did come down the street, they came for a reason, which keep our neighborhood quiet and safe because we don't have unnecessary crime or anything, you know, people that are coming down there disturbing our peace. That's the first thing. The next thing would be rodents and snakes and trash from trash. With 32 units of people in one, in that small area, because it's not as big as it seemed. That's, that would be a lot of trash buildup, which would also create rodents and other pests. And they, the two retention pawns that they have that is at the back of the property, which will, could possibly bring other pests and snakes. We will be left to deal, to suffer the most because we're at the back of that property. Let's see, what else I have? Let's see what else I have. I think, oh, the increase in foot traffic, which like say, once McIntyre Drive Street is opened up so that it will increase foot traffic, which will increase crime and decrease our piece of safe, well, peace, I'm sorry, I'm rushing. Decrease our sense of security and our peace in our neighborhood because once you have that unnecessary traffic or the foot traffic that people be walking down and just overall decrease our safety in our neighborhood. And I think that is everything. Oh, the noise. The noise will be another issue, the noise from the apartment, apartment complex and also the noise from Moffett Road. It's already noisy since they've started clear, clearing out that property already. We hear the, the traffic way more now at night especially. But it, it's also increased the noise in our neighborhood. So I think that's all that I have to say. Oh, mosquitoes with the retention pool in the back, or retaining pools, whatever they call them, in the back of the property will also bring mosquitoes. And that's it. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, so Ms. Hughes, you said they've already started clearing the property?
Yes, they have cleared the property. We can see clean through from our property to Moffett Road. We can hear the noise and also it's, my safety level is already has decreased because people can walk through the property and at night, well, if we never had that issue, dogs and everything are coming through the property. My husband seen two stray dogs coming from their property yesterday. And it's just, is they, like I said, you could see the traffic at night and you can hear it also.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bert Hoffman. The city did receive some complaints about work occurring on this property and the engineering department did go out and inspect the site. They determined that the brush removal was not, or did not require a permit since they were only doing brush removal and they were not actually disturbing the land in terms of digging things up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Ms. Grove, you have an opportunity to respond to anything that was spoken, if you so choose.
The only thing I was gonna say, but Bert kind of took care of it, was that, yes, there was some clearing done on the property, but it was just underbrush clearing and overgrowth of ground cover and stuff. It was no tree removal or actual land disturbance that required any kind of permit.
Has the, has the, the, the single-family dwelling that was on the property, has it been demolished yet?
No, it has not. It still remains.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment. I mean, just looking at the staff recommendations and obvious, you know, high level of just contentious feelings about this. This just seems troubled. And, you know, with our job being to look at what's before us, I see, I mean, I could see us approving the subdivision for the single lot, but I can't, I'm not gonna get behind the, I'm not gonna get behind the rest of it because it's, it is, it's very troubled and I think that there, there just needs to be more due deals that's put into this.
Any other questions, comments, or thoughts from commissioners?
I do have a question about protests, Mr. Gant. Ms. Grove's asked if we thought the inclination of the commission was gonna be to deny, if they could withdraw their application instead of having it be denied. What is the, how do we address that request? Because until we take a vote, we don't know. I guess we could know through discussion.
Well, I, I would, you know, I would say, I would encourage the applicant to deny it if they feel like that it's not pointing in their direction. You know, and, yeah.
Matt, you made for the applicant to withdraw it?
I'm sorry, I understand.
This is Doug. It's kind of, you know, like asking to take a straw vote before we vote, just to, for her to make that decision. And that's, we've been asked, we, we've done this before, discussed this before and, you know, I'm not sure. We've got one member who's vocal in his opposition thus far. If, if five of y'all or four of y'all agree with, with Matt, then without taking a straw vote, then, you know, that could give her some guidance. So without any further information, it's hard for us to say you need to withdraw this.
Mr. Anderson, what are the ramifications of having it denied versus withdrawing it? The length of time before they reapply for something different?
Exactly. Six months to reapply for rezoning. If they withdraw, if they withdraw, they could resubmit next week.
I have a couple of questions that I have for, probably for staff, but I, I wish that we had somebody from traffic here. I was reading through the traffic comments and the thing that concerns me the, the most is it, it makes a statement in the, in the traffic comments being that Moffett Road is an ALDOT maintained roadway. It says the proposed driveway on the site plan does not seem to meet access management standards that ALDOT requires on this roadway. I mean, we need to, I don't see how you can get around that. I was leaning more towards voting for the development because of the fact that it's, I understand the neighbors' concerns, but, I mean, it's, we're not talking about a hundred and thirty-two houses. We're talking about thirty-two living, living quarters. So it's not a huge development. And if you have the privacy fence around the property, you have no access to McIntyre. I mean, if you've got thirty-two residences, that would not be a, a, a large amount more than what could be put on McIntyre if it was extended on out to Moffett Road. You could easily put, even if you put the houses the same distance apart, if you could go back to the site plan, Margaret, if you could, yeah, that, there, the, the map. Now, looking at the, the, go back one, here we go, the aerial view, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's perfect right there. You've got, I mean, the houses, the way they're placed together on Moffett Road, if you were to carry that on out to, I'm sorry, the, the way the houses are placed together on McIntyre, if you were to carry that on out to Moffett Road, you could still easily put probably ten or twelve or maybe, you know, around that number in there. So, you know, going for these eight buildings, it's not a tremendous amount larger than what you could put with single family. If you had the privacy fence, all those things lean more towards, you know, seemingly like it should be able to be made to work. But the biggest concern I do have is, is access to Moffett Road and that would not meet ALDOT standards. So that, that to me is a major roadblock.
Don, I can probably help with a little bit of the answer to that question. You know, they would be required to, to get a permit from ALDOT. This section of Moffett Road would be, would be under ALDOT's jurisdiction from a permitting standpoint. And ALDOT would probably make the determination whether or not it would be a full access driveway, kind of as it's depicted here, or if they would only allow right-in, right-outs. With that small a number of units, they, and there being a, a center turn lane along the full length of Moffett, in all likelihood, it would be approved to be a full access. But I know ALDOT has done some, has developed some access management plans along some of their more heavily traveled routes and they try to let that be the guiding principles for how things get permitted. I don't, I know the lower end of Moffett Road actually has one as it gets closer to the interstate. I don't know if this far out, if, if their plan actually goes that far.
Right. And it also, it would be, I guess, if McIntyre Drive was extended on out to Moffett, that would be, you'd have that same issue, maybe a few more cars, but it wouldn't be a tremendous amount more cars than what you would have if just single family was built out on that little section of property. But that's just my observation and, and view of it. But, I mean, I do understand the neighbor's concern. It's a, it's a well-established community, neighborhood in our community and we do want to protect neighborhoods, but we can't really factor in financial issues when it comes to property values and all that. We can't look at crime. We can't look at all those things. The practical things that we can look at as a commission include, you know, traffic issues, light pollution. We can address the zoning questions, fire department, all, all those things we can look at and we can use concerns in those areas to, to make a, an informed decision. But we can't, we can't deviate from those things to really try to make a, a decision other than those things. But question back for, for Margaret and Bert on the zoning. I'm, I'm still a little confused on, on the zoning because they were requesting B, B three, B three, I think it was?
No, sorry, they're requesting B one.
B one, okay.
However, um, multi-family simply requires R three.
Okay.
But, and R three would prohibit business uses.
And that was staff's concern, going to a business zone, from a, from a residential zone. Staff could not find a reason to support that, but going from R one to R three, that's not that big of a jump.
Well, that and, you know, there are four sets of criteria that the zoning ordinance establishes to justify rezoning a piece of property. The applicant's justification was simply to subdivide the site to create, to create this development. And that's not exactly, to staff, that's not the intent of that justification in the zoning ordinance. You know, I'm subdividing lots and I need this zoning to accomplish that.
Okay. Margaret, I've got a question possibly for the, possibly for the applicant. And this with regards to the retention ponds and McIntyre Drive. And I guess my question is, is have, have they investigated McIntyre Drive enough to see if they actually have a point in which they can tie, tie the discharge of those ponds to any drainage along McIntyre Drive? I'm, I'm not, I don't have firsthand familiarity with the drainage on McIntyre Drive, but I'm just curious if they've looked at that to see if that is, if there's underground drainage system present for them to be able to tie to.
Yes, we have investigated that through the GIS system and, and surveying. And there is existing drainage right at that end of McIntyre Drive where the property actually presently drains to. So that is why we have basically placed our proposed retention, detention areas at that end so that the outfall can ultimately be to the same place it is now. Of course, it would be a controlled discharge for, you know, the flood ordinance provisions and everything.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Grove, while you're with us, could you address, in the application, there is comments from the fire department. Could you address what you have done in these buildings and on this property to address and make sure that you're meeting the current fire code?
I'm sorry, I'm pulling the fire department comments in front of me right now. Uh, let's see. Oh, their, their comments about meeting the City of Mobile Fire Ordinance, Fire Opera, Addison, the access of the hundred and fifty feet of buildings and, yes, we will, we would meet all those. We would have appropriate fire hydrant locations and any, any required apparatus from the fire, that the fire department required. And also access to make sure that they can get to the buildings as they need to with their fire trucks.
Are these buildings sprinkled?
They are not right now, but if it became to it that it would be required, we would, we would look at that.
Margaret, could you address the concern? I'm just going back through the list of things that I heard that were actual we as a commission can address. We talked about traffic. Something was mentioned about light pollution. Could you please address that and, and what's required? I know we've had this issue with ballparks and such in the past, but did you address what would be concerned? What, what would be required to address their concerns for this property?
I'm gonna need, Bert, I'm gonna need your assistance, but on lighting, does that, do the lighting standards apply to multi-family?
I'm gonna look that up to get you a definite answer, but I would say that because this would be a parking area with more than twenty-five cars, they would have to meet the lighting requirements and provide a photometric plan. And the plan would have to indicate that the lighting was at zero-point-two-foot candles at the property line where it abuts residential uses.
Okay, but does that apply to R three? I know the commission could add that as a condition to the PUD.
I am looking.
Thank you.
There's nothing that says that multi-family development is excluded from this. So it does indicate that it would apply to multi-family developments.
Mr. Henry, I would strongly recommend, however, if the commission is leaning towards approval, making specifying compliance with lighting standards. So there is no question.
And my last question, Nick, you had mentioned about instead of having the detention ponds or the retaining ponds, that there might be a way to get this to drain into the existing city, city drainage?
Yeah, so my question was, I mean, typically the retention ponds, you know, tie to an adjacent underground drainage system. And I just wanted to make sure that there was one in fact there that they could tie to, which it sounds like that there is.
Okay, you, you would just tie the overflow from the retention ponds into that?
That, that, that's correct. That's correct. We work, we work with the design engineers on these scenarios and their ponds may have to be bigger based on if we have any, have any known issues downstream. It might be that they have to take the pond to a hundred-year design storm as opposed to just a ten-year. Basically, just makes their pond bigger. They can hold more water and discharge it. But that's, that's, assuming it gets past this process and they get into more of the nuts and bolts with the, with the engineer. This is kind of another, another, another question for the, really for the applicant. I mean, it, it seems as though we've just got a fundamental difference in what's, what's being proposed. I mean, by right, it would seem like a single-family residential street with a cul-de-sac could be built in here. You could easily build ten to twelve houses, maybe, maybe more. And there, that would be allowed by right. And the number of structures seems to be, as proposed, seem to be a little bit less than probably what a single-family street would look like. So I'm just really a little more curious about the, the meeting that was had. Did the, whether any other concessions or any other compromises that were requested of the neighborhood that the applicant could have made or did make? Or are we just at a scenario where we've just got a fundamental difference of what the existing residents want versus the proposed, proposed development?
Unfortunately, I think it really is the, the fundamental difference of, you know, the residents not wanting any kind of apartment, multi-family development on this lot. We, we talked through a bunch of different things. We have, we have cut off access to McIntyre, you know, the fence. And, and I understand, you know, there's, there's traffic to look at and everything, but the traffic wouldn't be the, wouldn't be different with multi-family or single-family built here. So, or not a lot different. So, um, I, I think it's, it really does come down to just a fundamental difference that the, the residents just don't like the multi-family.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna just point out that, you know, we, we've got a lot of things that we're saying that would require significant, that seem like they would require significant changes. I understand we'd have to get ALDOT involved, potentially going up to the hundred-year flood thing. I just, to me, it makes more sense if something like this is, is, you know, put off to a future point instead of just rushing into it right now. We, we benefit nothing from that.
Margaret, could you walk us through if, you know, depending on how we end up voting today on this? But I'm, I'm sort of, either way, I can see it both ways. I understand the residents' concerns, the neighborhood's concerns. I totally understand that. I totally sympathize that and get it. But I also see that, from my view, this, the development itself is a very conservative development and they've done a lot to try to secure. And they've done a lot to try to secure the property with the fencing and no, no access from McIntyre. So, um, this is probably one of the more tough, tougher, uh, applications that I've seen in the eight or nine years I've been on the, on the commission. Cause it's, there's just no, I just, I wanna say no to it because of the neighborhood's concerns, but I'm having a hard time finding legitimate reasons to say no based on the guidelines we have established in requirements for subdivisions and PUDs and planning approvals. So I know city council will end up being the ultimate authority on the zoning change. And they'll have to factor in a lot more than look at a lot harder than what we do, but. I, I'm inclined to support the application with the conditions of the photo light plan and also making sure the fire department is, you know, concerns are addressed and making sure ALBOT concerns are addressed.
Mr. Henry, are you suggesting that you approve it based on the B one zoning? Or would you support an R three zoning?
I would support R three, not changing it to a business zone.
One more question I have for the staff, do we have any in this? Plus or minus a mile or so of this location along Moffett? Are, are we aware of any other multifamily, uh, units, apartment complexes that are, that are adjacent to the, uh. Residential, residential, single family residential properties? I'm just curious.
There are three in this area. Hmm, no. Based on the map here, which goes roughly from House Berry to University. There's no. Apartments that I can think of right offhand.
None, none jumped out to me.
There's a.
There's a motel.
University.
Yeah, where's the motel?
It's on the north side, right, where that orange is on the north side by the university loop, but left.
There's a small motel.
On Moffett, that orange.
That, yes, the old motor court, there's a, an older motel here. Sorry, my, here.
Everything else is.
Okay.
And their apartments further down Moffett towards, uh, 65.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Bert Hoffman. I'm looking at the map and I don't believe there are any apartments. Uh, further down Moffett Road. I think the closest thing. You might have is that there is a multifamily development on the south side of Moffett near Wolf Ridge Road. But that is, I think, individual houses. That are available for rent. It's gonna be just, just west, no, there is an apartment complex there just west of Wolf Ridge Road on the south side.
I'm, I'm still concerned that. They have not. shown the appropriate reasons for changing the zoning. Other than just wanting it to be set, the four conditions that have to be met. Can we talk about those a little bit, Ms. Thomas? Cause I know that the, the. Staff did not think that they had met the requirement. And if that should go to an R three, do you think that would?
Well, the only one, I'm sorry, the only one that they addressed was the, uh. They referenced number four subdivision of land subdivision or imminent subdivision of land into urban building sites makes reclassification necessary and desirable. That's. Not something we see going on in this area.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
I mean, granted, you have to start somewhere, but there's no, there's no other catalyst of this nature occurring in this area.
And I think we've seen in other areas where we've had to address kind of difficult issues where the creep had already occurred and we really, well before this planning commission was ever in place. And so I think it's important for the commission to look at. We don't want to start the creep, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And I think that we need to respect neighborhoods and respect single family residential strong communities and help. Continue those strong neighborhoods and support them. That's just my opinion on this, that there are no real changing zoning. There's no changing conditions right now that would force. Or would, um, the word, what's the word I'm trying to say, would. Create the need for rezoning at this point.
It's almost speculative.
Well.
Any other questions or thoughts or comments by commissioners? The only other thought I have is that, I mean, it's, we can either vote to approve it, vote to deny it or. Hold it over. Uh, the, the only advantage to holding it over would be to, to allow the applicant a chance to. Address some of the legitimate concerns that the residents mentioned today, such as traffic, light pollution. Clarify the zoning question and clarify some fire department concerns. And then. That, that, that would, uh, allow the applicant to also make, have time to make a decision whether they just want to withdraw the application as well. Uh, Ms. Rose, your thoughts on that before I call for a motion?
Um. We are ready for a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we take these separately?
You can. So.
And we will, we might need a roll call vote too.
Okay. On, uh. Item seven A, the subdivision recommended for tentative approval. Uh, is there a motion? Move to approve the subdivision based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Property moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor on subdivision item only?
Aye.
Aye. Uh.
Any opposed on the subdivision item? Subdivision item pass. Item B, uh, zoning, is there a motion? Move to approve the zoning change to R three. Based on staff recommendations, does zoning require findings of facts?
We've been incorporating findings of facts into rezonings, yes.
All right.
Conditions.
And typically, Mr. Henry. Those would be the four, one or more of the four conditions for rezoning that we typically cite in the report.
Okay, Barrett, give me just one second. I don't think we have findings of fact because staff recommended that it be denied for zoning. Yes, yeah, staff, staff didn't listen, going to respond to.
You can, this is Doug, you can pick any of those four reasons that are set out, the error, change, increase in need or the subdivision. You can rely or state any of those four to justify a rezoning.
Okay, now would, uh, the only one that would come close to supporting it would be two.
I would agree. If, if there is one, it would be number two.
So that's the changing of conditions in the area make a change in the ordinance necessary and desirable?
That's correct. We have a motion with finding effect, uh, changing condition. Uh, but I do not have a second thus far. Is there a second? Is there a second on this item? Uh. Item would fail due to lack of a second. Item number three, PUD, or item C, PUD. Is there a motion for the PUD? I believe that's.
Margaret, without, without, without the rezoning, we don't have a PUD, right?
That is correct, but I wanted.
I'd like to make a current motion on the zoning.
That would make it easy.
I'd like to move that we deny the zoning request.
Second.
Moved in segment for denial of the zoning request. Uh. Uh, I, we could, any discussion? Uh, all in favor of denial of the zoning request?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against the denial of the zoning request? Opposed. I have one opposed.
Opposed. That's two.
Who's that?
Who is the second?
Cameron.
Thank you.
Uh, zoning fails, so that means the PUD request is mute. So, uh, all we have is approval, our application seven, we have approval of the subdivision. And denial of the zoning and PUD request. Thank you. Item number eight. Forty-eight hundred Moffett Road. Mall Stickney Plant Subdivision. Recommended for tentative approval in subdivision and the PUD is also recommended for approval. And the planning approval is also recommended for approval. Just, uh, is there anyone here for, for this? Uh, project, Margaret?
I've admitted Don Whitt. Think I have.
Yeah.
I've admitted Don Whittington into the meeting here for malls.
Uh, I'm here.
Don, please pause your live stream in the background. Mr. Chairman, the applicant is in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, this application, all sections are recommended for tentative approval. Do you have any additional comments, questions or concerns? I'll speak to the applicant. It's representative.
Don. Don, you're on mute.
The council, I'm the chair, David Rayory.
Okay, Don?
Yes.
Do you have any concerns regarding the staff's recommendation?
We is also.
Um. No, I mean, it, it, it all looked good.
Can you mute your background, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to, trying to minimize this so I can. Okay, is that better?
Maybe, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I figured it out. I'm slow, but I get there.
Right, so you have no questions or concerns concerning staff recommendation?
Uh, I, I do not, um. We, there was, uh, we had shown, uh, this, a sidewalk on the recommend, uh, well, there was a comment. And it was, uh, there was a sidewalk waiver that was approved. And I'm not so sure that was correct. I was looking back at the, uh, at the, uh. It's November, uh, uh, I think November third, 2011. And it was recommended for holdover to the December meeting and the December meeting. It was recommended for denial for the sidewalk. So we had, we had shown a sidewalk along Moffett Road and Shelton Beach Road. So. We had a question about that. malls is gonna be redoing the privacy fence along both those roads. And they would like to, uh. Like to do that, put the sidewalk in on that project, on, on security fence project. Which they, which they plan on doing sometime in, in, uh, 2000 and, oh, a year from now, 22. So that would be, uh, that was one question we'd like to, like to have or consideration.
So you're asking if you can put a sidewalk here?
Well, I, I'm not so sure that a sidewalk, uh, waiver was approved. Looking back at the 2011. Um, letter of decision. Which recommended it for holdover to the December. I mean, and in December it was denied along Moffett Road and Shelton Beach Road. But it, it would be great if, uh, yeah, if, if there was a sidewalk waiver that was approved.
I was thinking it'd be great if there was a sidewalk you'd put in, like, based on what you just said.
But what I'm saying, I don't, I don't want to not put a sidewalk in and then, uh, and then you look back at your record and say, well. Uh, the sidewalk waiver was actually denied, not approved.
If it was previously denied, it would, it was, it would probably be denied again if it came back before this body.
Right, right, that was, uh. That was my point. I, I don't think it was approved. Uh, it was approved on, uh, for Woodley Road and Mercedes and LaRuth Road, the, where they connect. Uh, this, but it, it was denied for Moffett Road and Shelton Beach Road.
This is Bert Hoffman. I'm looking at the letter of decision and that is correct. You are required to build a sidewalk on Moffett Road and Shelton Beach Road, but you are not required to build it on Woodley Road, Mercedes Road and LaRuth Roads.
Right, right, that's what I, that was my thing, is what I was thinking. So with that said, malls is willing to put the sidewalk in. I mean, uh, they're not asking for sidewalk waiver, uh, they know they're gonna have to build it. But they would like to have that put off until they do the, uh, uh, put the new security fence along Moffett Road and Shelton Beach Road and make that part of the same project for that.
Okay. So is that part of this proposed construction? Or is that later?
That's gonna be later. Uh, that's gonna come next year. Uh, and I guess my question is, if, if they put it in, does it have to be immediate? Or can it be? Uh, I mean, is there a timeline on, on when it has to go in, the sidewalk?
It's typical sidewalks, construction is typically associated with the project, which what's before us are the maintenance building and the building and fuel tank.
Yeah, yes, emergency generator.
I would think.
So since.
Go ahead.
The original application was in 2011 and so it should have been built after the original denial when the other projects were undertaken on the site.
It's been 10 years, what the hell's another year?
Must have been Alan.
I mean, uh, uh, the, the thinking is to get the sidewalk in, they're gonna have to relocate some of that fence. Anyway, to get the sidewalk in. So they're thinking, well, if, if we're gonna have to rework some of the fence, can we put it off until we do our fence project and then install the sidewalk at that time?
It sounds like they. It sounds like they put it off for the past ten, ten years, so I think they should probably be pretty strongly encouraged to go ahead and get both of their efforts underway.
Margaret, can we, in the, in the PUD, can we put in just like a, a time period of six months for them to get the sidewalk in?
Typically, what we do is, we don't allow, uh, approve the certificate of occupancy until it's installed.
Okay.
Now, I would think anything beyond that would necessitate a waiver, which we're back into the situation we were previously, and as Nick said, you know, if it wasn't approved ten years ago, are there any changes in the area that would warrant its approval now?
Margaret, it would seem like these two issues, unfortunately, one shed the light on the other, probably need to be considered independently. I would think the, the previous issue that's not been addressed, the sidewalk, that's probably a separate conversation that perhaps Planning Department and maybe the Engineering Department, Build Mobile, need to have with Malls, independent, independent of this new, new request. That's kinda how I would tend to, tend to see it.
This is, this is Doug. I agree with Margaret's response to Don's question in that if, if we don't... I- if we do give them a timeframe that is longer than their permits, their CO, uh, the recording of a plat or whatever, then we have no leverage over them to force them to do it. So they have, they would have to do it before they get, uh, you know, before they record a subdivision plat, before they get their final CO.
Uh, just, just to Don again, uh, I mean, the leverage you have would be when they go to improve their fence, uh, you, I... You could deny that request, uh, because, uh, I mean, you can make that part of the, the project to put the fence in, to be approved, to put the fence in.
How, why do they not wanna go ahead and just do the sidewalk now? I mean, what, how does that affect, impact with, with the new fence being installed?
Well, they're gonna have to relocate part of the existing fence and, and to put the sidewalk in now. And, uh, they just wanted to do it all at the same time, when they put the fence in, put the sidewalk in, instead of having to relocate part of the fence now.
Margaret or Bert, what, what was the work at hand in two thousand and eleven that, that perhaps was tied to the sidewalk that that, that was being done? At, at that time, what else was it that was being proposed? I don't know if that's something Bert has, has readily available or not?
I believe they were putting in, uh, additional, uh, tanks that held chemicals. If you look at kind of the middle of the map there, right where the cursor is, I think those tanks that were put in were part of that, uh, project that triggered the sidewalk requirement.
So, so in, in, in theory, that, that uh, facility shouldn't have had a CO issued to it, or, or whatever document it might have been that was appropriate for that type of facility?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, the sidewalk's one in.
Yeah.
From, from staff's perspective, we would either want the sidewalks where they were not waived at the end of this construction, or an approved sidewalk waiver.
Okay.
We can find a way to get them, to help them out with trying to time out and schedule, uh, the new sidewalk with the fence repairing or replacement. I'm okay with that, but I'm not okay with having an open end, you know, no time limit, uh, type deal, where it may, may or may not ever get done. And the, the sidewalk is part of this PUD, right, Margaret?
Yes, it's part of, the sidewalk requirement's actually, eh, yeah, it's PUD, technically, it's of the subdivision. That's what triggers sidewalks.
And they did not apply for another sidewalk waiver, so the previous application and split denial and approval would still apply.
So if we were to approve this today and not address the sidewalks at all because they're not before us, then they could come back and ask for a short-term sidewalk waiver until the fencing project is done? Or they could just go ahead and build a fence, right? I mean, build a sidewalk, nothing.
Yeah, I just, um, I was trying to communicate with Doug about that. The only thing that can waive the sidewalk is a sidewalk waiver. And I'm not sure, I'm unclear as to the commission's authority to defer construction of the sidewalk. But kind of going back to the point you were making at the beginning, Mrs. Latham, is realistically, right now, the sidewalk's not really before the commission. It will only be before the commission with a proper sidewalk waiver application.
So, when they get, if, if they were to, we were to approve this today, and they were to begin construction of it, everything moving along just fine until it's time for their CO, we don't have anything to do with the sidewalk. So between now and then, could they come back and ask for not a sidewalk waiver, but a sidewalk deferral to coincide with their fencing project, or something along those lines, or is that not an animal that they could ask?
You know, I don't know that we've ever encountered, or that I've recently encountered, this kind of animal. You know, where you kinda get a sidewalk deferral.
That, that animal don't exist.
It's not what is before us today.
Correct. I mean, they, they have an aspiral, the only way, only authority we have is to grant a sidewalk waiver. They have not asked for one. It should be an administrative, uh, issue, an enforcement with, with permits and COs.
Appreciate Mr. Williams being forthright in explaining to us the conundrum that he is in. Thank you.
Perhaps the, the, the way forward is to hold this over and give Malls or Mr. Whittington a chance to come back in the next meeting and maybe explain Malls' plan forward in a little bit more detail than just next year. Maybe with a little more specific, I deal, I deal with one of their counterparts on a very regular basis, and I know most of their projects are planned out pretty, pretty meticulously, so he might be able to give us a, uh, provide a better timeframe in which, in which this work is actually, uh, planned, and, and more importantly, funded. Yeah, cause it, and that could have been what happened. It could have been something they had planned, and they ran out of money in the past, but uh, that might be a way, a way forward with this in the, in the short term.
Well, and staff could possibly do some additional research to find out, to see if we can track down any documents to find out what occurred.
I tend to think that, I tend to think that they're not the bad apple to, to not do things that are, that are required of them to do, so I'm, I'm just kinda speculating. There might be something else there that I, I don't know what it might be, but something may have happened that, uh, uh, that delayed that.
Uh, does Don wanna hold it over, or does he wants to go in and build on it today, as is, with the sidewalk required, then, to be put in?
It's, uh, the, the only problem I have with the, the holdover is that, that we have our plans in for land disturbance permitting. And land disturbance, this, uh, the PUD and the subdivision was part of the, was the land disturbance comment. So if we hold it over, that's gonna put our land disturbance permit off another month. So... And I don't know if I'm the one to make that decision, but...
Well, Mr. Whittington, could you have some information back from Malls by noon on Monday?
Uh, yes, I can try, but could, could you approve the, the, the PUD and the subdivision and the planning, and then put, uh, uh, put a condition for a sidewalk waiver to be applied for at a later date?
No.
No, we don't, we don't do that. You know, you, you have the right to come in and submit that waiver, Don. We can force you or ask you to replace that condition on you.
Yeah, but you, but, um, I, I get, but you can't appro- can't approve the, the, the three, the subdivision, planning, and PUD, uh...
Yeah.
Without having, uh, a sidewalk waiver presented at the same time as those three?
Absolutely.
Okay, yes.
Okay, I, I, okay.
Don, you've, you've currently got a, a requirement to build a, or Malls has a requirement to build a sidewalk that was part of an action of, of the Planning Commission. And based on the history of this, and I can't say, I mean, everything stands on its own merits, but the likelihood of a sidewalk waiver being approved here, uh, at least I know from my perspective, would be pretty low. So, uh, I just don't know that I would see that, see that being approved.
Okay. Yeah, it was denied one time, nothing's really changed, so...
Yeah, I think there's more of an explanation that, that the commission needs as to why it was not physically constructed when it was initially denied. I think that's really what the commission would hopefully like to, like to hear.
Okay.
Cause as it stands, it should have been a sidewalk there eleven years ago. And now you're asking for, uh, consideration for some more time. I don't know how much more time we need in eleven years. Unless there was some circumstance that caused it not to go in.
Okay. Um, so, Margaret, you, you mentioned Monday by what, noon?
Yes, Monday by noon, because we have to have staff reports completely posted next week, so there's really no wiggle past Monday at noon.
Okay. Uh, I'll try to find something out tomorrow and, uh, and give that to you. I guess just an email to you would suffice?
If you would, send it to planning@cityofreville.org. That way it goes to multiple people.
Okay, all right. I, I will, I will send something tomorrow on a, on, and, and this is, uh, whether we want to hold it over and, uh...
No, if, if we're getting revised information tomorrow, this is going to be held over. It'll simply be held over to March fourth. But again, that means you have to have additional information back to us by Monday, the twenty-second, at noon, so that we can incorporate it into the staff report for that March fourth meeting.
Okay. But... Okay, I'm trying to get my thoughts together here. I mean, the sidewalk is gon- gonna be built, and gonna have to be built. But if I sent you comments or any information on it, it still wouldn't change the fact that that you couldn't, uh, delay the, the construction of the sidewalk. So is there any reason to hold it over?
No, I mean, the sidewalk is either gonna be built or it's not, and if it's not, it's gonna take a waiver.
Okay. All right, we didn't submit a waiver, cause, uh, we knew a waiver would be denied. I, I would say not hold it over.
Sounds logical.
I mean, uh, that way we can get the land disturbance permit, and they can start, start construction on the, uh, on the maintenance field, and then the, uh, generator and five-day fuel tank.
Margaret, I think we're going, I think we're going in, in circles. I think we need the chairman to ask for a motion, that I think Mr. Whittington is not understanding that it, either, either the commission's gonna hold it over, recommend it be held it over, or we're gonna vote on it as it is, and I think there's some concerns about moving forward with this, when there's a past outstanding, pretty significant issue that's, that, that's unaddressed, and I think we would like to see it. Really, some of us would, would possibly like to see it addressed before the commission, um, you know, takes, takes the bigger action on it.
If we vote, uh, approve, uh, or deny, wherever, if we vote on this today and don't hold it over, then if, if we were to vote to approve it, the sidewalk waiver, there's no, been no sidewalk waiver applied for, so the requirement is gonna be there. And whatever didn't happen ten, eleven years ago, we don't know, but for today, when we approve this as is, there's gonna be a requirement for a sidewalk, and that sidewalk is gonna have to be completed before they can get their CO for this project.
Yes.
Okay, so we would consider putting a condition on it to that effect? Okay, that's, that's, okay, that's, makes me...
Requirement is my understanding, but...
Yeah, just, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned about understanding what the timetable is for fulfilling that, that past obligation. That's, that's my real, real concern, and clearly, there's, there's, there's something that's, that's to that. Uh, I feel pretty certain Malls would, would, would wanna warrant that. They've been a good partner with us with
Oh, yeah.
doing, doing ADA and sidewalk improvements associated with their work. Um, as long as we have something that's, that, that doesn't let another eleven years go by, I would be inclined to support it, but that would be the only reason I, I would, I would suggest a holdover, is if we don't feel like we can put something enough wording in there to support that. If we can, we can add that to the conditions, and it, it won't, won't let, you know, another, another ten, eleven years go by without it, then I, then I am in favor of it. Kinda think they're two different issues, but if they're not tied together some way, we kinda lose any, any, any control over it, that, that, that should exist.
Well, hopefully it won't get overlooked this time.
But also, I doubt they won't get their certificate of occupancy.
That's right. That's right.
There are motions to be put forth?
You wanna take the, uh, three individual components?
Yes, uh, eight A subdivision, is there a motion?
Looked approved based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item eight A passes. Item B, PUD, uh, is there a recommendation with finding the fact?
Looked approved based on staff recommendations, findings, facts, A, B, C, and F.
Second.
Properly moved in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed. Or at C, planning approval, uh, is there a motion with finding the facts?
Looked approved based on staff recommendations, findings of fa- facts, uh, A, B, and D.
Properly moved in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed. All items passed. Application is approved. Uh, with sidewalk requirement. That's already nately embedded in it. Any other business, Margaret?
Just a reminder to the commission that you will have your public hearing for the UDC a week from today at two o'clock. Staff will be forwarding y'all lots of information in the coming days, including comments received, emails, Zoom link for the meeting, et cetera. If anyone has any questions regarding the UDC, uh, the report, the public hearing, please contact staff. We will be glad to meet with you, talk with you, answer your questions.
All right, thank you.